All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to April 23rd Board of Selectmen Agenda Meeting. Let's rise and pledge the regent.
.............................................................................................
So let's go and approve the minutes from April 9th meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Community relations announcements and an open forum.
All right. Good evening. Announcements for the Board of Selectmen meeting, April 23rd, 2024. Real estate and personal property tax, our bills for fourth quarter are due May 1st, 2024. Yard waste drop-off, brushes, branches, glass, grass clipping and leaves, April 20th and 27th, May 4th and 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 100 Flint Road. Fire substation informational meeting is April 24th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. at the Charlton Middle School. In celebration of National Poetry Month, Charlton Public Library presents an Evening with Robert Frost on Thursday, April 25th, at 6:00 p.m. in Dexter Hall. Talented historical actor and library favorite Stephen Collins will present his unique riveting performance on the life of a poet, Robert Frost. Included will be discussion of many Frost's most notable poems. The performance closes with a haunting memory, the death of the hired man. Registration is requested. Additional parking is available across Bain Street at Town Hall. The event is co-hosted by the Charlton Public Library and Charlton Senior Center and supported in part by grants from Charlton Cultural Council, a local agency which is supported by the Mass Cultural Council Estate Agency. Charlton Earth Day, Saturday, April 27th, 2024. Cleanup is at 8:00 p.m. Earth Fest, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Town Common. Annual Town Elections, Saturday, May 4th, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Heritage School. The annual town meeting is Monday, May 20th, 2024, 7:00 p.m. at the Charlton Middle School. And that's all the announcements.
So, onto the open forum. Thomas? Join us.
My apologies, Ms. Parker, but I did not know that you'd be here this evening to give you a set of handouts.
No problem.
Bella, you can check on them.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to comment about paint stewardship legislation that's presently before the House Ways and Means Committee. My name is Tom Irwin and I live in Dalton, the 54th Central Ave., where as a member of the Waste Management and Recycling Committee, we were facing the same daunting waste crisis that Charlton faces, rapidly increasing hauling costs and tipping fees, and we were looking for a solution. After a careful study of ways to address this issue, paint stewardship seemed like the perfect first step, and after confirming it was working well in the eyes of consumers and retailers in Vermont, New York and Connecticut, I became an advocate for this law in the state. The need for paint stewardship is to begin addressing Massachusetts solid waste problem. This is a problem that results from 6 million tons of waste being generated annually and only having 3.2 million tons of incineration capacity. The remaining 2.8 million tons of waste need to be landfilled, have to be hauled out of state to places as far away as Ohio, which is a high ever-increasing cost and has an extremely large carbon footprint. Product stewardship is an approach to begin reducing this burden that is endorsed by the Mass DEP 2030 Solid Waste Master Plan that calls out paint, product stewardship in particular and paint stewardship as well, as a solution to this problem. Their plan also calls for a 30% reduction in waste by 2030 and a 90% reduction in waste by 2050. I cannot imagine how we're going to accomplish this without product stewardship. Paint stewardship, which is a small piece of the pie, is a program where unwanted paint can be returned to participating retailers any day they're open, at no disposable cost, without regard to where the paint was purchased or when the paint was purchased. The cost to consumers will be 75 cents to a dollar per gallon paid at time of purchase. 80% of the collected latex can be reprocessed to original specs and sold for at most 50% of the original cost at places like Restore. The oil-based paint, though 20% can be reprocessed, is most often used as an industrial coal fuel and cement plants in southern part of the United States that have adequate scrubbers to make sure there's no significant pollution. The benefits will be first, that it'll be a service that Charlton residents are going to value. This is quickly apparent by noting that 92% of 735 Massachusetts residents here in the Central Valley and western part of the state that attended household hazardous waste day events signed petitions asking their legislators to become cosponsors of this legislation. That suggests the 92% of the residents of Charlton that have paint in their garages and basements, and I'll bet there are many, would support this law. Second, it will represent no cost to municipalities and will decrease household hazardous waste day costs, freeing monies for other solid waste issues. And third, it's going to be a model for future product stewardship legislation that's going to address large issues such as mattresses, solar panels and packaging. Although 28 reps and 12 senators sponsor or cosponsor this bill, significant support through municipal resolutions is critical to compel the Ways and Means Committee to seriously consider paint stewardship, view it favorably and send it to the floor for a vote. Hence, I respectfully request the Charlton Board of Selectmen put paint stewardship on an upcoming agenda to make possible adding their valued endorsement of paint stewardship through passing a supportive resolution. A draft of such resolution is on page two of your packet. Thank you for your attention.
Thanks. Yeah, you can put that on like an upcoming meeting, but you know, probably want to run it by the board to help too, to get their thoughts, but yeah.
I'm going to be sending everything that I just shared with you electronically to that wonderful woman, Mary, and I am trying to get brownie points.
Mary is wonderful.
Yes. But she's not here, that won't go to her head.
Thanks, Tom, for coming. I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
And for you advocating for this, that's good.
I find that amazing that I thought everything was incinerated, that...
I have paint my basement. I would love to be able to get rid of it a lot easier.
No, I thought it all went to wheel operator or somebody, or it doesn't. But that much, that much of it goes to other, Ohio and other places? It gets transferred that far to a landfill?
Yes. South Carolina, Ohio, western New York, those are all the definite spots that it goes to. And the latex recycling facility is actually just east of here and just right by Waymouth, and they would be able to manage a substantial amount, not all, of the latex that we would generate, which will be approximately 700,000 gallons a year is the amount of recycled latex.
Latex, so gloves and things and masks.
No, this is latex paint. This is just latex paint.
You're so passionate about it. How did you get involved in that?
I am part of the Dalton Waste Management and Recycling Committee, and I was the guy that was the engineer for 30 years, and they said, "Well, look, if you can go and put the space shuttle into the space, you probably can figure out how to help with the garbage." So I'm the one that figured out paint stewardship, and I said, "I'm stuck. Like, the only way to get it for Dalton is get it for the entire state, and I'm retired, so I'm giving it a go."
Well done.
We have a Keep Charlton Beautiful Committee, too. I'm sure they would like to hear from you.
Do you have my card?
Yeah.
If they give me a call and say, "Can you give me a presentation?", I'll be happy to go.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tom.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for an open forum here or on the TV? No, I don't think I can see that far. Okay, moving on. Appointments and resignations.
All right, we have one resignation for this evening. It's for the position of Traffic Constable. Attaches a letter from Matthew Oberzett residing from the position as Traffic Constable for the Charlton Police Department. Due to not having much flexibility and is scheduled to meet the need, I recommend the Board accept this resignation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Some scheduled appointments.
We're a little bit ahead of schedule.
So maybe...
How about the Activities Council, please?
Yeah, you want to go to new business?
All right, so the Activities Council has an application for a special event permit and traffic and crowd management permit for the Blueberry Festival. Attach our applications for a special event, traffic and crowd management permits for the Activities Council to be used for the Blueberry Festival on July 28th, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at 4 Dresser Hill Road. The application has been approved by the Fire Department, Building Department and Police Department. I recommend the Board approve the request.
Everybody loves the Blueberry Festival, so... Motion to...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm glad that we found the volunteers for that because that was problematic. Oh, maybe you can guys ask the HNS people, yeah?
Okay.
Yeah, that would be great for that, because I know they need help all the time. Thank you. All right, next one. Where are we? Of this staff. Oh, you want to go over there?
Sure.
Do you have time? Yeah.
That's fine. So at the request of Selectman Singer, we included a discussion regarding the future staffing plan for the Office of the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator with respect to the planned departure of Ms. Hemilowski from the office this September. Attached, I've included a list of duties and responsibilities of each position as the office is currently structured. While there is some overlap and cross-training of individual job duties and responsibilities, each has a very important role in maintaining the continuity of operations for the office. I do believe that the current staffing level is necessary to maintain the level of service we're able to provide, however, there is a potential to restructure the office in a way that better provides operational efficiency and a clear chain of command. I have attached a copy of the proposed duties and responsibilities provided under a revised office structure and looking for direction from the Board as to how to proceed.
Anyone?
I would, well, I've read what Andrew wrote. I also had a conversation with Andrew. I'll make the motion to approve Andrew's changes. I believe they are needed. I believe it's well thought out and put together by Andrew, and I think it's something that's overdue, that we had actually looked into a long time ago. But, you know, you don't want to sometimes disrupt things, but through attrition, you have an opportunity to make a change now that we've looked at a long time ago. So I would move to approve the change as Andrew's put it together.
Do we need a motion for this?
Correct.
Yeah, I'll second for discussion.
Okay.
Andrew, I have a question. I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
Sorry, I bounced through you. The executive assistant to... I'm sorry, I think the best way to say this is, under the existing administrative duties under both DeCara and Mary, for example, are they all now still covered under the proposed office structure? Because I thought I saw some things that weren't in here, and I didn't know where those would fall.
All of the duties should be covered. If there is anything, let me know. I might have, I might have double pointed everything. But I tried to basically move more of the higher-level administrative duties to essentially would be the assistant position, and then more of the clerical duties to the administrative position.
All right. As long as everything's still getting done, that, you know, that was my only concern.
Yeah, the one add was that because we were looking at creating that, the Director of Facilities and Cemetery's position was that that administrative position would also assist with that department as well.
What's the delta for, from an R7 to an R9 and R6 respectively, for salary range?
So with hiring a new person, it would be a net zero.
Oh, serious?
Yeah.
So the executive, that position will be the R9, and then we're looking for the R6?
Right, and R6, and it would be at a lower level because you're hiring a new body without the years of experience.
Anybody else?
No, I'm assuming...
No, that sounds good to me.
If Mary's sitting here, I'm assuming that we're targeting Mary for the...
Targeting.
For the assistant here?
Yes.
So does that mean I can't call her in this?
Yeah, I do have to know because you're creating a new position. We do have to go through the process, but it is noted.
Maybe we should put it up on the discussion.
That is the intent.
Bill needs a personal line?
Yeah.
No, I think this is cool. I think Mary's going to do an awesome job, and the fact that it's a, that is a net to the town, it's just reshuffling the chairs a bit with responsibilities, and if you think this works in the office, that's good for it.
Yeah, and after so many years in the office, you know what you need and what was best for you too, and that's important.
That's kind of the direction.
In the office.
That's kind of the direction that we've had with Treasure Collector's Office, who was previously Treasure Collector with an Assistant Treasurer and an Assistant Collector. We restructured that similarly, where it was an assistant, where it was a true assistant and a department assistant, so it's trying to replicate that structure.
There is a line for you. Process Bill.
Ah, thank you. I'll have him miss this in here.
All right, so that's that. Do we have...
We have a motion.
Oh, motion is, I'm sorry.
We have a motion in a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on.
Yeah, right on time. I'll go see if the finance committee's...
Yeah.
Mary, I still expect, you know, white glove service when I call.
So we go with this.
I just want to show.
Say, "Process Bill."
I did, I mean, and let's be honest, I'm a lot.
Yes, you are.
Oh, good, Ashley's there.
Can't disrupt the party.
I don't sense that's... Andrew, do you have anybody on line? How's it going, everybody?
All right.
All right, we are ready whenever you want.
All right, so Finance Committee has been invited to your meeting to jointly vote on recommendations for the budget and town meeting warrant articles. School Committee is scheduled to meet tomorrow night to consider a revised assessment following the release of the House Ways and Means Committee and their discussions with the town of Dudley. Once those changes are voted on, we'll reflect that in the final warrant, what's to be acted on at town meeting. So this evening, the Board should take action to approve the town meeting warrant and act to support or not support each article.
Ashley, does FinCom have to open officially?
We open.
Oh, did you really?
Yeah.
Oh, nice. You guys are smart.
They're working up in the hallway.
You're not messing around. Madam Chair, I don't know what to do, because I know historically, like, sometimes gone line, article by article, of all the times, there's been enough that we've said, let's just...
From here.
Particularly the housekeeping.
Yeah, exactly.
All right.
Are we taking a stance on question one, like officially?
Requires no art, it requires no action, so...
So that's no action.
Two, three, four.
No, until five, right? So one, two, four?
Yeah, well...
Two to four.
Two to four.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'd say that I'd make a motion from our side that we support Articles 2 through 4.
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion?
Aye.
Right, so that's that.
Yeah, and I'll make a motion that the FinCom Committee supports Article 2, 3 and 4.
I'll second it.
So we just need Jamie to vote. All in favor?
Here. Aye. Yes, aye.
Hey, Jamie.
Okay. And I'll present in favor. Yep.
Yes.
All right, next one's a big one. This is Article 5, with the Fire Department Substation. Like, I, again, 100% in favor, so at least for discussion, I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen support the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous that we support this.
And I'll make a motion that the Finance Committee supports Article 5.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Jamie.
Aye.
Yeah, 6 is our standard transfers.
Seven.
Seven is the capital items related contract. All right, I'll make a motion to support both Articles 6 and 7.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion that the Finance Committee supports Articles 6 and 7.
I'll second it.
If I may, just for a point of discussion, Ashley let us know there was a new line item in there that might pose questions, so for the audience, if you just want to speak to the opioid settlement.
Yeah, so that opioid settlement funds, the $13,504, that was state money that we got last year that every municipality is getting, and the state hadn't told us what we could, where we could put the money to spend from it last year, and they made a decision this year, but our amounts that we got last year closed to free cash, so we just need to move them, put them in, into an account so we can spend based on what the state tells us we can spend on.
I think that's better. I think that's, it's transparency and everything just goes right up there.
Yeah, that's the only way for us to move it anyway, because it's sitting in the free cash.
So that's gone from the free cash to the, to the special.
Yeah, so that account we just set up, because we just got guidance on that's where we could put it.
So. Thanks for that.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Why don't you turn around, Jamie? I'm looking at you. No, I'll speak them, don't you worry.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So where are we? All in favor?
I know, so eight, I know we've talked about a lot between our two respective committees, boards, et cetera, I think, especially the Finance Committee and Ashley and Andrew did an awesome job this year, so I don't, I can't foresee any issues with this. I mean, outside, I know we didn't work through the school, the final notice, the school's ready, but motion to, to support the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I agree with everything Bill said, and I'll make a motion that the Finance Committee supports Article 8.
I'll second it.
Yeah, agree that Andrew team and the departments did a fantastic job, so any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I know, nine and 10, the standard water sewer broken out respectively. I didn't have any questions on it, so motion to support.
Second.
Nine and 10. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nine and 10.
And I'll make a motion that the Finance Committee supports Article 9 and 10 as well.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
11 is stabilization fund transfers. We don't have any, so motion to support the article being postponed indefinitely.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I'll make a motion that the Finance Committee supports Article 11.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Jamie.
Cemetery Perpetual Care, 22, 3 this year, so that's fine. Motion to support.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion that the Finance Committee supports Article 12.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on Finance Committee? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Revolving funds. Ashley, anything change on this one this year?
Nope, not a thing.
Same as last?
Same, exactly as last year, yeah.
Cool. Motion to support.
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I'll make a motion that FinCom supports Article 13.
Second.
Finance Committee, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Article 14 makes me happy, so for those at home, that's, we're bumping up the real estate exemption for certain taxpayers, so motion to support.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and just for clarification, for those at home, that includes veterans, surviving spouses, seniors, as well as certain blind persons.
And, and I'll make a motion that the Finance Committee supports Article 14.
I'll second it.
Finance Committee, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
So 15, Ashley correcting you, and Andrew, this is the one that actually just bumps up the thresholds.
Correct, yes. It just bumps it up to 20,000 single, 30,000 if buried, 40,000 for whole estate limit, single, and then 55,000 if married for the whole estate limit for the exemption, for the exemption qualification.
Again, that's about time. I'm glad MGL makes these adjustments. That being said, motion to support.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion that FinCom supports Article 15.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This next one's water sewer. This is the purchase of those two parcels over on the road. The only thing I question here, it says authorize said commission having care, custody and control of said parcels, taking such other actions as deemed necessary, advisable to effect the purpose of... Basically, that's just saying that once they buy it, they can do what they want with it.
Correct.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure there was no idea around eminent domain or like, there was no...
No.
And this is, and this is coming from their enterprise funds anyway, right?
Yeah, the water stabilization.
The water stabilization, I'm sorry, yeah. All right, motion to support.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and just again to point this out for everyone at home, this is huge. And people may not realize how huge this is. Charlton, as a, as a town, we've been pushing for water independence for a long time, and people have heard me say, we're, we finally can see the light at the end of the tunnel. This is one of those steps that's bringing us closer to achieving this goal, finally.
So...
No, I'm sorry, no.
But if, so before they appropriate that money and buy it, they found, they think there's a reasonable supply there? They've already done their due diligence on that? Because they've been looking all over town.
My understanding is that they, they have had an option on that property for a year, have done test wells, have realized enough water supply that it would meet what they're looking for from the, from the well, so they're looking to proceed with the purchase.
It's great, McCray.
And I'm... Are we good?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and I'll make a motion that Finance Committee also supports Article 16.
I'll second it.
Any discussion for Finance? All in favor?
Aye.
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 17, 18, Rizone, historically unless it's had a direct impact on economic development, we've stayed quiet, so I'm fine, just staying out of this one. Anybody have a feeling on it?
Which one, 17?
18.
Yeah, those should be...
So, yeah, all right, we're good. So for those at home, both FinCom and Board of Selectmen support everything on this. Knowing we helped it together, I can kind of see.
I know.
So, yeah, we'll see you guys May 20th.
Thank you. So just looking at our agenda, any updates before we adjourn?
No. We have the fire, your fire, what day is your presentation for fire?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Finance Committee needs a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Don't want to play the wrong.
See, guys, thanks for coming. Great job this year, seriously.
Thank you.
Ashley, don't go too far. I've got tons of questions for you.
Uh, where are we?
Old business.
Uh, old business.
All right. So, name change to the Board of Selectmen. So on, uh, March twenty-eighth, Governor Healy had executed the act authorizing the name, uh, the changing of the name of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board as approved by town meeting in October. As recommended by Attorney Cosgrove, the only change is how the Charl, is, is how in Charlton the board and its members will be referenced to, and future actions will be limited to a motion to amend the Charlton bylaws to make them generally in accordance with the new name by which the board will be referenced. It's been previously directed to consider the change at special town meeting in the fall, noting the act had not, uh, yet passed a legislature by the close of the warrant. Given the act has now received approval from the state, just seeking for the direction how the board would like to proceed, confirming that you'd like to proceed with the special town meeting in the fall.
Anyone?
Aye.
No. So, so, just so we're clear, so that will now go to the town meeting for the fall as article?
Yes.
Basically saying that we want to change X to Y.
Jim already wrote that, right? That's already, that's already written. Yeah.
Okay.
So we're just looking to say, yeah, we're shooting for the fall.
Yeah, sounds good. I just want to give you guys more or less the update.
Yeah, I know, so we're not.
Do we want to have any other discussion? Not tonight, but about?
I do, yes.
Pete, that was kind of directed at you, to be honest with you.
Yes. I've been quite clear on that, so, yes.
Is there also, is there anything for, I see TA review, but there's nothing in here for it. Nope. Um, so the next start of agenda would be town administrator review. Uh, so as per the Board of Selectmen policies, the board is set to perform an evaluation of the town administrator's performance for the period between July first and June thirtieth. The board has traditionally performed the evaluation at the last meeting prior to the election to cover the period from May first to April thirtieth. Um, we're a little late in getting the, the rubric out, but that has been forwarded to you guys through, um, through Human Resources. They've asked that you guys, uh, try to return it before May first, so that way we can go over the reviews at the, uh, next meeting. More or less an update, no action needed.
That works for me.
Till the policy review.
All right. So, over the past few months, our finance team has been working to develop a formal financial policies and procedures manual as recommended through our most recent audit. The financial policies procedures manual consolidates many of the policies previously adopted by the board and addresses areas in which internal controls were needed. I recommend the board approve the financial policies, uh, and procedures manual as presented, given that, um, there may be a few questions first.
Pass to you.
Yes, sure.
Page six. Uh, Andrew, I don't know if you, uh, where did Ashley go? Oh, hey, Ashley. These are all painless. This is, these are more for my thing. So, uh, general policy two, general internal controls policy. Question, we talk around the procedures, say, shall on ongoing basis conduct risk, risk assessments, et cetera, et cetera. What's your definition of like ongoing basis? Meaning, like, how often are you going to do this? How, how is it going to be reported out? I mean, do you have some type of?
Ideally, I'd like to do them at least quarterly, just to go around, check, make sure everyone's not breaking any.
Yep.
Audit, all that likes us to do it. At the very least, I'd like to at least do it annually, but ideally it would be quarterly.
All right. Can we just get updates on when you're actually doing them?
Hmm?
That's, that, that, that would be about it, only because, you know, we're in a bank, like, risk is such a huge thing for us.
Right, I agree.
Yeah, so it's one of those, it's just top of the line.
Yeah, so we kind of do them daily anyway, just, like, I'm not allowed to go over to the treasurer's office to cash in, only because I also then do AP, so they take all the cash in, no one else is allowed in that office but them. It's like, we kind of do them as it is anyway, but it's nice to go around and just make sure everyone else, um, is also following the same procedures as everyone in finance as well.
That just makes me happy. Thank you. Uh, next up is not actually a question, but rather a well-done. Uh, financial two, the debt management?
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to congratulate you and the team on putting that together. Uh, for those who have insomnia, this is out in our packet that you can read, but I thought you did a really nice job on this, talking around what, how, how, when we want to finance, how we want to finance. Uh, it really, really spells it out nicely, so I just wanted to give you a shout-out on that. Uh, question now. Unless people have other ones with that.
No.
For now. Uh, page forty-eight. I just had a question. This is under Fino three zero, financial reserves.
Okay.
There's a line in here around free cash.
Mm-hmm.
And, I gotta find it. Oh, here we go. It's under A free cash.
Yeah.
The town was set a year to year goal maintains free cash in the range of three to five percent of the annual budget.
Mm-hmm.
Haven't we been above, like, have we, have we been pushing that a little bit lately?
I think we've, we, because FinCom's goals are kind of ten, are usually ten percent of the annual budget.
That was reserved.
That's reserved. It's reserves, yeah.
That's reserved, right.
We've been trying to, we've been working to try to get up to that, because historically, we've, we've spent free cash down to zero with, with no revolve.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we're trying to set a range of saying, our, our target is X, to, to maintain it without, without appropriating it.
So on a roughly thirty-five to forty million dollar budget, we're talking anywhere from one five to two.
Right.
So, that, so.
I think it's saying that the amount that we get appropriated for free cash every year, to at least maintain, so we, if we just say on, on average, we've gotten a million five back.
Yep.
So just to maintain three to five percent of that in reserves, and when we go out to bond, they actually did ask us that last time when we went out for the public safety money that we had spent. They had asked us, like, oh, your policy says X, but you're not doing that. Because I think we had something along these lines somewhere else.
I thought it was three to five percent of the overall annual budget.
Well, there's both, so it's, um, though, that's putting money into reserves, but this is.
Well, the town was set a year, a year to year goal of maintaining its free cash in the range of three to five percent.
Okay, sorry, it does say annual budget, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, don't worry. I just want you to know that I actually read this.
Right, I'm glad. I took a lot of time writing a lot of this, so now I don't even remember what I wrote.
So three to five percent, I think that's rel, that's reasonable. My concern is, I know we, um, budget very conservatively. I don't want to see it get too high, meaning, like, if it's not to get above five percent.
Right.
I'm going to start questioning to say, all right, are we not forecasting as, as aggressively as we perhaps should, but I, I think three to five is fine, but I just want to throw that out there.
How, how typical is that three to five number to neighboring town?
Well, like, oh.
Well, we're much better than most.
That's a hard question.
I don't think I've ever read anyone else's financial policies and what they do, but I know historically, like Andrew said, we had spent our free cash right down to, like, literally the penny that we got.
Yeah.
So we've been trying to hold a reserve, because they did ask us that last time when we went to bond.
Same policy, uh, under stabilization funds?
Mm-hmm.
Under general stabilization. Town will endeavor to maintain a minimum balance of five percent. I'd like to see, uh, I, I, I thought we were going for ten.
Yeah, I think we, that was a, that was a miss when we were reviewing it. We had changed it elsewhere in the policy to ten, we just missed this, uh, this one.
So, all right, so that's going for ten.
So that's under Fin three?
Uh, sorry.
Aren't we, uh,
Fin three.
Okay, so ten percent, okay.
Yeah.
I can fix that.
Don't worry about it, it's all good. Uh, actually, honestly, that's all I had. I thought, I thought you guys did a fantastic job on this.
Thank you. It was a good team effort.
That was really good.
And stabilization, just for the people at home, so now we are at.
Approximately ten percent.
Ten percent.
Ten percent.
Yep.
Which gets us to the triple A bond rating or very?
Well, we're, we're not guaranteed, but that working towards our goal will help us when we go out, because when they come to us, they ask us a bunch of questions, they'll look at this financial policy packet and say, okay, are you meeting X, Y, Z goals that you set for yourself? If you are, that's great, so it's a good benefit towards us. So they definitely do look at that. It's not guaranteed, but that's what we're crossing our fingers hoping for. It also depends on who's also going to bond at the market at the same time as you. If you have a big, if you have a big community that's also going to bond at the same time as you, they're comparing you to that community as well. So I know when we talked to our financial advisor last time, he said that there aren't a lot of big communities left to, um, go out to buy, and that, uh, we're already higher than us. We were probably pretty good at the time, so.
Yep, cool.
At a strong favorable position to achieve a triple A bond rating.
Right, because they also look at economic development as well, which we've clearly had a lot of in the past couple of years, so.
No, no, that's all I had. Like I said, I thought this was really good, and I don't know if we need a, like, a formal motion, at least for discussion, I, I have a motion to, to accept or approve, whatever one it called.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Good job, Ash.
Awesome, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ashley. Students' ex-person reports.
London, you want to go first? Sure. So, starting with the arts today, the Shepherd Hill Drama Department will be putting on the high school edition of Clue on Friday, April sixteenth, and Saturday, April twenty-seventh, so that's this week. Um, you can purchase tickets at onthestage dot, onthestage dot tickets dot com, and come find out who did it. Of course, that's, again, featuring Harry Kennon. Um, additionally, the music department is putting on a musical, Mama Mia, featuring many hits from the group ABBA. I hope I said that right. If you are interested in watching the show, tickets are available at shepherdhill dot, shepherdhillchoirs dot ticketleap, ticketleap dot com. Show dates are May tenth and May eleventh. Now going into the school-wide information, AP exams are coming up quickly, and students are beginning to receive information about schedules and room assignments for their exams. Further information about dates, times, and room assignments will be emailed to students through, I don't know why I said my, Mr. Gendron. Um, keep an eye out on your emails. Please help the DCRSD community send A.J. Congdon, a local student currently battling cancer, off to Seattle at the A.J. Strong fundraiser. I know we talked about that earlier. This event will include a free throw competition, kid races, face painting, and a one-hour-long workout class. Fundraiser will take place this Saturday, April twenty-seventh, from twelve to two P.M. at Shepherd Hill, and all proceeds will go to the Congdon family. Finally, I think this is the most exciting, but seniors are beginning to commit to their future universities. Seniors, majors, and schools, if you're interested, are available on the S H class of twenty-four Instagram page. Good luck on your future endeavors, seniors.
Did you commit?
I did, yeah.
Where are you going?
UMass Amherst.
Hey, well the.
What major?
Political science.
You better.
Good for you.
Thank you.
See? Hopefully we influence you in some way.
Away from our.
Thank you, Marlon. That's awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.
So for Bay Path students who are taking AP classes, will also have the exams in the coming weeks. Um, another test coming up is the sophomore math MCAS. Uh, an additional event to note is that Friday, there will be no school for a professional development day. And then, the Skills USA States Competition will be held this week from Thursday to Saturday. Next, seniors of the health, health tech shop have earned their certified nursing assistant licenses. Another event to note is the National Honor Society inductions happening next month. Last but not least, Daniel Daye of the Advanced Manufacturing Shop was presented the Outstanding Vocational Technical Student Award.
Great. Um, can you do me a favor, both of you, and I did, um, I emailed Jacob, can you look into those scholarships to see how many applications are out there floating?
Yeah.
And can we get an invitation for the graduation for each school?
Yeah. The scholarships through the town?
Right.
How many people have applied?
See, there's an interest, yeah. How many, well, we can know from with Mary, or if people know about it, just kind of refresh everybody that they are viable.
Okay.
And with, um, with the teachers that are supervising it, who would like to get, you know, information about the graduation, and if we granted those scholarships, if we can, we will be there.
Okay.
Whoever wants to, yeah.
What next? So, town administrator report.
All right. So, the Main Street Sidewalk Project. We received bids for the Main Street Sidewalk Replacement Project. Bids are currently being evaluated by McClure Engineering before awarding a final contract. Total estimated cost of the project in accordance with the bids is approximately four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. This cost has got to be funded through the funds provided by Amazon to the town for sidewalk reconstruction and expansion through the community partnership agreement. Maynard Field, we're working quickly to address the ADA issues identified by the Architectural Access Board prior to the upcoming football season. Bid documents for the project will be available to interested contractors, uh, this week for the project with an estimated timeframe to begin construction in June. We received some inquiry as to whether or not the, can, the upgrades include a path leading to the Charlton Elementary School parking lot. Uh, currently, the access path is outside the proposed scope of work, but will consider upgrades of this path after the completion of the project. The estimated cost of the ADA upgrade project scope is approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Eighty-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-five remains in the original funding authorization on the project, less the engineering costs, and the remaining amount will be funded through funds provided by the, by Amazon to the town for recreational improvements through the community partnership agreement. The library roof, uh, J.D. Ribbit has been awarded the contract for roof replacement on the library addition. A pre-construction meeting is scheduled for next week, and construction will begin soon after. There may be some parking area disruptions during this time for, uh, material staging. Public safety radio project, we've issued a note, the planning board has issued a notice proceeding, a building permit's been issued for the construction of the new public safety radio tower at Bay Path. Materials for the project are currently on site, and the project will commence in the coming weeks. At the ACO Building, students from Bay Path are currently working with the Police Department and Animal Control to build out improvements to the Animal Control Building, including exterior pens with improved access controls to the interior pens to improve safety in transferring animals. I just want to take the opportunity to thank Bay Path for their assistance in providing the labor for this project, and our Highway Department for assistance in site prep. And currently, we're recruiting for the positions of COA Director, firefighter, EMT, water sewer managing director, and library page. Anyone interested in these positions may do so at towncharlton.net/jobs. That's what I got.
Thanks, Eddie.
Other business, no?
Well, as, as far as we, we, to get back to the Amazon and, uh, and the sidewalks, that money's already, we already have that money, or we send them a bill at the end of it all?
We have, we have two-thirds of that money. There's one tranche remaining that is to be issued at, um, the, um, substantial completion benchmark.
That's awesome.
There's been a few questions about that, so, it's good, that's awesome.
All right. Now, the business, next meeting announcements.
Fire substation information meeting is April twenty-fourth, six P.M. at Charlton Middle School. Our regular meeting is May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Pre-town meeting Monday, May twentieth. That's at six P.M., Charlton Middle School.
Question that, yeah, can we make that six-thirty? Thank you.
Oh, for the pre? I'm going to be there at seven anyways.
Oh, yeah, six-fifty-nine.
Annual town meeting is at seven. We are really hopeful to see everybody there.
Uh, and, we all good? Any, any of us in the audience, one?
Hi, my name is Nicole, um, one fifty-two Southford Road.
Oh, Nicole, can you?
Yeah. I've had an opportunity to talk a little bit about the ADA compliance at Maynard Field, and I'm questioning just why sidewalks are not being included from the hill down until the ADA parking lot. And I really just was wondering if I could hear a little bit more from the selectmen, talk about, you know, their thoughts on the ongoing project and the use of the Amazon funds for that.
So let me kick off a little bit of that, that as part of the commu, uh, community partnership agreement, there were specific items that were negotiated. So at this point, to change that would be a, a difficult task, would probably be a nice way to, to say it. So as part of the plan, and Andrew, correct me where I go wrong, it wasn't going to extend out the, um, sidewalks, it was rather going to replace what was already there and make them ADA compliant and everything else that, that goes along with that. Longer answer to your question, I think that the overall updates to, to the field, inclusive of the ADA we're going on, down there now, I think that's something that we need to look at on an ongoing basis to try to find a way, if we can fund it. Because I think those fields are, are going to start to get used more and more. Um, so I think it's just a matter of prioritizing, getting the right people together and saying, you know, looking at our overall operating budget every year, and say, okay, how much more, if anything, can we, can we put to rec? And I'd say in general, as our town continues to grow, I think with the influx of what I'm going to assume is going to be a lot of children, um, that, that the more we start thinking proactively about this, I think the better off we'll be.
And something that the board should meet with the Recreation Commission on and try and work together.
We have been meeting with them on a regular basis, myself and Andrew, so we have been working in collaboration with them, and I think this is moving forward, uh, very fast. And it's not just the, it's not just the road down, it's the, you know, it's a parking lot, it's the extension of, of that road down there by the shack. The shack moved, you know, there will be a new, um, there'll be a new shack, you know, built up, so there's a lot more than just the, um, uh, than, than what we have to do. Yeah, and we working with, uh, with the Rams, you know, directly, we have been meeting with them, so there's certainly, uh, for last couple of months, I want to say three, four months, there has been, we have been meeting a lot. Yeah.
More to come.
It's going to be done.
More to come. We, are we all good?
Yeah, I think we're good.
My own chair and my respective colleagues, make a motion to, to, to go into executive session under MGL, Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty Way to Twenty-One A, to discuss strategy, respect, and collective bargaining of litigation. Police union approve and release of executive session minutes. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, to return to open session if needed and to adjourn.
Roll call.
I did, give me a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Singer, yes.
Aye.
It's Kiva.
Kida.
Thanks, guys.